Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, May 10th, 2017, meeting of the school committee. At this time, we'd ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a seat. This time, I'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. Mayor, school committee members, welcome back.
Good evening.
We're missing a few folks today, but we're gonna soldier on nonetheless.
Sure.
We're gonna start tonight with some video presentations. Four middle schools were challenged to compete to create public service announcements. And I think the first video will kinda lay out the program and talk about the partnership we have with the cable company.
LPS Media supports the operation of six TV studios in the district. Lawrence High School teaches TV production classes. South Lawrence East is our main broadcast studio. And we have satellite studios at the Arlington, Gilmette, Partham, and Weatherby. Our goal this year was to update these studios with the latest technology, train additional staff, and we now offer after-school enrichment classes two days a week at each of the new studios.
Hi, my name is David Lemay, and I teach a class here at the Arlington School. We've had up to thirty kids involved, but there's about ten to fifteen that have been really consistent about coming. There are main writers and performers that have been coming in for each of our shoots. Our class started about three years ago where we blended a program with English Language Arts and Theater Arts together. We used one to support the other. And through that program, we were blessed enough to be able to get some television equipment and be able to continue our blend of English Language Arts with media arts. It's been a really good year so far, being able to create all of these different films and scripts. And are able to present their own thoughts and ideas about not only what's happening around the world, but what's happening in our school. I think there's a healthy mix about kids who wanna be creative and kids that would like to pursue something like this in the future.
I'm trying to argue, and if I don't do my job, you can't hear anything.
I am the real star of the show. Yeah, we share no wish.
It's fun because we get to create our own skits and create our own characters.
Now, I think we're gonna see each of the creations from the four different schools, starting with the Weatherby.
You make a life by what you give. Byron St. Churchill.
Are you willing to help the community?
Next up, I think, is the Partham.
True or false? Diet soda is healthier than regular soda.
Artificial sweeteners found in Diet Coke have been found to increase sugar craving because it's not a natural source of sugar.
Also, artificial sweeteners sugar insulin, which send your body into fat storage mode and can lead to weight gain.
My fear is snakes.
Clowns.
I'm afraid of the dark.
Mayor, what are you afraid of?
My fear is snakes.
Clowns.
I'm afraid of the dark. You're staying at a dark corner. You just feel it's gonna come out that corner and they grab you. My mom.
I'm afraid of being kidnapped.
Spiders.
I'm afraid I'll be on TV.
Courage is not the absolute fear, but the trials over it.
And our last clip today comes from the Arlington Middle School, I believe.
What happened at school today? I got kicked out of class. I think I failed that math test and be more optimistic. What? Who said that? Who are you?
Look on the bright side of life.
Who are you?
I'm optimism.
What's optimism?
Here, I'll show you.
I'm thirsty, I need some water.
I got some water.
This thing is half-empty.
I'll drink it, it's half-full.
Yeah, let's always look at the bright side of life. High-tech optimism.
Okay. So, my understanding was there was a vote taken across the district, and the winning PSA was judged to be the Arlington Middle School on optimism. So, I think they're here today, Mayor, to come up and get a photo with you and the school committee. Nice job, guys. Nice job, guys. Always a pleasure to see you, Mr. Lemay. How's it going, right? All right, good to see you. We also had late-breaking news today. Heidi Rios, an Abbott freshman at the high school, was awarded the Congressional Art Competition for the third district. Her self-portrait titled "The Trapped Introvert," which you can see up there, I believe, will be hanging at the Capitol for one year. And her and her family are being flown to Washington, DC for the ceremony in June. So, congratulations to them. We'll try to have her either at the next school committee meeting or at the one in the fall. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm pointing you to your packet on MSBA projects.
Cool.
I think Mr. Piano asked for an update on that. I will remind folks, at the bottom, you see that we have current applications awaiting action from the MSBA, including the roof and boiler repair at the Arlington School, as well as the roof repair here at the North Common Educational Complex by the SES School. We anticipate hearing one way or another this Friday, Mr. Mayor, and we are cautiously optimistic. Obviously, we put in for a core project to replace the Leahy School as well. So, that work continues. I would say that since I've gotten here, we've, you know, talked a lot about the need to upgrade the facilities here, many ancient buildings, many problems, and it's this administration that's done a great job of getting these things on the docket, which in many ways is a no-brainer when the state picks up a huge percentage of the cost. So, I don't know if you wanna talk about that at all, Mayor, but that's kinda the...
No, just, I think just having the information in front of us was good enough.
Any questions from the group about that?
This is Mariano.
You might bring Mr. Stronach up if there's detailed questions.
Superintendent, is the Leahy, will you hear about the Leahy Project this Friday also?
I do not believe so. I think that's a different track, and that's later in the year. But we'll come back, we'll try to get you the actual date on one we're gonna hear soon. I think the Friday meeting is only about the accelerated repair projects, not the core projects.
Okay, thank you.
I would point also to this packet for the end-of-year celebrations. We have many things going on in the district, including our spring concert series, Lawrence Family Academy, the Upper School, 9GA, Weatherby, 10GA, Leahy, Gilmette Middle, Gilmette Elementary, Tarbox, and Hennessy, all have different concerts taking place this spring. That is all on one sheet for your viewing pleasure. We ask if you can attend as many as you can make, or those schools that are in your district. In addition, we have many eighth-grade final assemblies taking place. That should also be in your packet. We have asked school committee members to attend those schools that are in their district, should you have the time. We recognize that some of these are happening during the day, so that's not always possible. But if you are able to attend, please let that principal know, and you'll be welcomed onstage as an honored guest. Yes? Joan, too? What is that? Oh, let Joan know, too, yes, I'm sorry.
Just a question, just a question on that. I remember a couple years back, they did a, it's gonna sound funny the way I'm gonna say it, but it was an en masse retirement celebration. I don't know if they, if they continue to do that, 'cause I haven't been to one since the first one that I went to back in fourteen.
I don't think we're...
Basically, in all, one fell swoop, we celebrate every, all the teachers and...
I think we're having a Teacher of the Year celebration coming up, but not a retirement celebration. We can get back to you on that. I think that there was one year when we had so many folks, many of the baby boomers were leaving the district, that we had a bigger celebration. But I'm not sure we're doing something for that this year.
It would be helpful for me if I could, if someone from the district can get me a list of the people that are retiring, so I can write them a note.
Yeah, we're in the process of gathering that information, too. So, as we begin to set up the plate for next year, some folks are deciding whether they're gonna retire, which happens every year.
Great. Any other questions? Thanks.
Okay. So, at this time, I thought there'd also be additional questions for the budget, so I'm gonna ask Vivian Hadar and Dr. Bergeron to come up and answer any additional questions you may have. Recognizing that this is a moving target, and we won't find out from Beacon Hill until later in June what the final number is gonna be, I do want to, however, point out that we are not the only district dealing with these budget issues, and particularly around the funding formula that we talked about last week. You'll see in the Globe today, Brockton is talking about laying off over three hundred people and a hundred and eighty-nine teachers due to the shortfall. So, some of this is about the foundation budget, which we think is often needs to be fixed. Some of this is about how they calculate poor kids, and it bears watching. And so, in that context, I will turn that over to our budget folks.
You just wanna take, see if there's been any questions?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Rivera.
So, my question is mainly directed at Dr. Bergeron in regards to the special education budget. It's my understanding that we still only have one physical therapist treating the whole entire district. I don't know if that's true or not, but we do have students that failed to receive services this year, and there are many students who require compensatory services. So, I wanted to know, is it in the plan for, is it in the budget to provide compensatory services? Or is it your expectation that the new therapists, the incoming therapists, will kinda work overtime or extra to provide those compensatory services?
We have been providing compensatory throughout the course of this year. So, for the services that we could, we've been doing them. Others, we have arrangements to do them during the summer school, because we do have people working the summer school. And then others, we've actually paid for some to go privately, because we didn't have the PT in particular. The speech, most of our compensatory is made up. We do have some compensatory BCBA services that will get done during the summer. Other than that, we're pretty much on par, except for our PT currently, and we've been working with the parents on that and how they wanna make it up.
Okay.
But positions are in the budget, so they will hopefully be filled again.
Okay. So, I just wanted to clarify in terms of the staffing numbers, in terms of, is it the plan to hire four new additional total therapists for the district? Is that the number I see here? 'Cause the variance is four.
We, we actually added assistants this year because I couldn't get physical, we couldn't get the speech therapy in place. There's a shortage of about twenty-five thousand across the country in speech pathology. So, we added three additional speech assistants this year, and there is one additional speech therapist in the budget for next year. So, I have three therapist positions that are currently vacant. They've been posted, and I've had eight responses so far this week.
Okay. Will we be adding special education to the next agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I did say I would have an update by, at our next meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Mrs. Mariano.
Good evening, thank you. Would you look at page seventeen in the budget book, please? I'm looking at the top, the reduction in educational expenses. It's almost three hundred thousand dollars there. Could you tell me what some of the things are being reduced? I'm worried about the students having enough materials, books, throughout the course of the year, and that seems like a large chunk of money to be reducing in educational materials or educational expenses.
All right, so your educational expenses are things that the schools have decided they either have moved towards positions instead of possibly contracting services. Some have reduced that they are now doing much more online, and they aren't needing to buy as many consumables. So, in our autonomies, every school has the right to look at what they need for their individual building and realign their resources as they desire to meet the needs of their students. So, those are reductions that individual schools made because they felt they needed to put money into other areas to address the needs of their students.
Okay.
But nobody's without paper, pencils, books, or whatever.
All right. May I go on, Mayor?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Last meeting, I alluded to the question, the exempt employees. I still don't have a handle on what an exempt employee is. I noticed in the EMOs, they have exempt employees, but the Oliver Partnership does, and the SLE Elementary does. Now, do those people have direct services with kids? Are they, do they do instruction? What is an exempt employee?
Exempt employee means that they're not, they're not in any one of the unions that is employed within the district. So, they're not teachers, they're not in the paraprofessional unit, they're not administrative credentialed. So, they might be person like, this school has decided to have an office manager. They're not a clerk, they're more like an operations person, but they're not in a unit. They don't belong to the clerical union, and they're not an administrator. So, they're exempt, meaning that they don't have an affiliation to an existing union in the district.
All right. For example, the Up Oliver and the Phoenix each have six exempt employees. Do you know what those six people do for those schools?
Well, I know they have an office, at Phoenix, I know there's an office manager. They had a climate and culture specialist. They had a school culture specialist. So, they have different, what they call specialists, that aren't necessarily credentialed teachers, but they're doing work around climate and control and that kind of work, rather than any instructional work.
Okay. Is, I don't know, is it possible to have a breakdown of what these exempt employees do at these different schools? I'd be, I'm just interested to hear what their specific role is in each building.
And you'll see that there were some shifts in exempt from last year. We tried to clarify some of those positions. So, last year, some of the administrative positions at the campus were under exempt category because they had not been part of a union. But then, many of them that became deans became part of the administrators' union. So, when you see the change in numbers, it's because they went from exempt to actually being in the administrators' union. So, the numbers look like it went up ten, but you went down eleven in terms of actual people that have been exempt category.
Well, according to this, you've gone down ten. Projection for eighteen, FY eighteen.
Yes.
Okay. Also, I did notice a couple of errors in the individual schools, the breakdown in the difference between the staffing for FY seventeen and FY eighteen. Specifically, and I don't wanna point them all out, but if you go to page thirty, the current FY seventeen, there are eighty-two staff members, rather than eighty-five point five. And it remains, for FY eighteen, it remains at eighty-two, and the difference is zero for that one. And there's a few of them like that. I could, I could give you a call, and, you know, they should be corrected. One other question, and then I'll...
No, you have, take your time.
I noticed there's an increase in principals and administrators, specifically at the high school. And if we go to page sixty-six, the high school breakdown, there's, as far as principals and administrators, they're going from twenty-three to twenty-seven, with a difference of four. And I also noticed the teachers and instructional coaches, they're going down, too. Now, it's my understanding that the enrollment at the high school is increasing. So, in my mind, if your enrollment's increasing, it would warrant more teachers. Why are we reducing by two teachers when in fact the enrollment at the high school next year will be increasing?
The two that are reductions are instructional coaches. They've become administrative curriculum, instruction administrators.
So, these actually aren't teachers we're reducing, we're...
Those were the coaches.
We're reducing coaches?
That weren't actually carrying a load for students. They were doing the coaching for teachers. So, now they've become actual administrators, supervisors of curriculum instruction.
All right. And what about the BBEs, the tutors, and the fellows? That's going down by five. Again, I see these people as having direct instruction with kids, and again, with the enrollment going up, why would we be reducing the people that have the hands-on with the kids during the...
If you look at the fellows, many of them were serving in almost like a paraprofessional role at 9GA, and then, instead of them, they've actually gone up in the support staff. So, they've added more people who are doing direct support to students, whether they be the counselors, or they're running instructional advisory types of groups with students in lieu of the fellows who are serving in a paraprofessional capacity.
Okay.
Just...
All right, I'm gonna, I'll stop right now.
You sure? I mean, if you have, just to follow up on that, that might be an interesting breakout that you can do, the number of, you know, people with instructional loads or contact with students in an instructional format in last year's budget, and how many of those are in this year's budget, so that there is a sense of like, what the net instructional impact is. And I think that's what she was getting, the, the school committee woman, Mariano, was getting at, like, is there a net loss in instructional service? Or is there a, or is it flat? Or are you growing it?
It's pretty much leveled in terms of direct, service delivery. So, in terms of direct service to students, teaching staffing, it's level.
Well, you see the way it's listed here.
This is Mariano.
I'm sorry.
And I understand that, and we struggled with how it had been listed in last year's book, because it was not the reality when they actually made adjustments in the budget over the course of this year.
So, maybe it's some...
So, it's kinda hard to go back and forth between last year and what's current, be put forward.
At some point, as the mayor has indicated, maybe we should have a breakdown as to how many have direct instruction with the kids, how many faculty members do...
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we would like to give it to you, given you where we started at the beginning of this year, because the numbers that were in the book may not be actually what we started the year with, and where we're going to start in the year next year.
Oh, and I do have...
And the good thing about having it broken up, then you can lay it out however you want, and do it over time, and you don't have to worry about how it looks in last year's book.
Mrs. Mariano.
Just one more. Again, last meeting, we talked about the special ed task force.
Yes.
And you did indicate that there's provisions in the special ed budget...
Yes.
...for the work that that task force has planned out. Maybe for the next meeting, we could have an update on where we are with the task...
You would ask for that, that's, that's on the plate for next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Dr. Rivera.
Just a follow-up in regards to the high school and the recent article in the paper. Is there a plan to hire a certified librarian, a certified librarian at the high school?
I have not heard that come forward from the high school campus at this point in time. Again, there's autonomy at the, at each school level, so they make those decisions in terms of staffing needs.
Thank you. Do I have something? Go ahead.
I have a question.
Mr. Castaneda.
Thank you. Will we be able to get a very detailed line item breakdown of every account that's been, that, every purchase that's been made at the school, or expenses made at the school, specifically utilities and maintenance, by any chance?
There are probably two-hundred thousand line items in the district. So, we usually clump them by educational supplies and materials, because every school, we probably do a hundred, two-hundred thousand purchase orders a year in the district. So, I don't know, that's voluminous in terms of whether you need to know every PO, or you just need to know how much is really ed materials, how much is operating expense, that kind of thing is easier. We could do that.
Yeah, I was really just focused on utilities and maintenance.
Oh, utilities, we can, we can break that down for you.
Cool, thank you very much.
So, that request for utilities and maintenance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Non-educational costs?
Non-education.
Any other questions?
Okay, I don't, I don't have a question, I just wanna make a statement about the budget situation, just to kinda make an announcement. I know we talked a lot about it last meeting. First, though, I think what school committee woman, Mariano, brings up about the technical corrections, you should really go through the book, and I know, we did some of them. And trying to figure out how to lay out, you know, a hundred-seventy-seven million-dollar budget, sometimes like, you think that the math might be easier, but it's actually more difficult. So, just making sure that that looks good for the council presentation is important. I just wanted folks to know that, you know, I've made it a personal priority to meet or exceed net school spending in my time as mayor. I know there's been some discussion about whether or not we're gonna meet it in thirteen, but I think, I mean, in seventeen. But I think that at the end of the year, after we go to balance the books, I think we'll feed, we'll have either met or exceeded net school spending in a real way. And, you know, all the while, we have to figure out a way to strike a balance with the needs of our students and the tax burden on homeowners, many who are low-wage earners, or fixed-income folks, or first-time home buyers. And so, knowing along that Lawrence has to do more to, for its schools, at the same time, making sure we don't overburden the tax base. And more importantly, because I'm a product of the Lawrence Public School system, again, I made it a priority to ensure that the culture of neglect to our school buildings changes along with the city's understanding that they have to take full responsibility of the cost of educating our kids and creating adequate and safe spaces for our students. Now, this is a culture that we, I, we together have inherited from former Mayor Lantigua and the school board that lost the control of our schools. You know, it's not something that we did, but it's something that those folks, questions they failed to ask, and, you know, information they failed to gather, and frankly, investments they failed to make. But I think in the time that we've been together, we've done the opposite, we tried to change this culture. You know, with the help of the city council since becoming mayor, we've committed to borrowing money to build new schools and to do the rapid repair programs with the, with the MSBA. And just last year, we spent about two million, three-hundred-seventy thousand dollars on capital projects in our schools. And I think that the culture of neglect is changing. I think Chris Marlino spends more time with Glenn Gary, our facility guys, than I think he's ever spent with anybody at DPW in the time that he's worked with the city. So, that culture is really changing, and the culture of paying our fair share and supporting our schools is also changing. It was, I don't know if you recall, I initiated this small investment in our varsity team's uniforms. It's a small investment, but it meant a lot, because we're talking about stuff that just, you know, I think that superintendent talks about stuff that happens outside the school, outside the classroom. And so, having them with new uniforms was important to me. Alongside those investments, you know, we figured out a way to put the school central office in a place where the rents don't cost, it's not gonna cost us rent next year. a place where the rents don't cost, it's not gonna cost us rent next year, and then gonna open up some classroom spaces. Now, just so that we can get you an update about what we're gonna do for next year, it was always our intention to submit a budget that covered the big leases that are in the school, the schools have. It was always our intention, even though one of those leases, because it's the Family Resource Center, will probably not be an issue after November of next year. But we were always going to be covered, those things were always gonna be covered in FY 18 budget. We also planned to submit a budget that covered the over $600,000 in new transportation money that's expected. And, and I had every intention to submit, as has been like the case in the last three budgets, to submit to the council a budget that either met or exceeded the net school spending. The question still remained about how to get to the schools, the added 2.5 billion dollars that the superintendent and his team requested. You know, I met with City Council President Candice Vasquez and the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, Councilor Plant, to inform them that we could get to where we wanted to go with funding the schools and adding the 2.5 in two measures that I'm, that I'm calling the educational support appropriations. The educational support appropriations consist of two measures. First, it would ask the city council to take 1.4, $1,470,000 from the Lawrence High School legal case settlement, and appropriate that to the schools for educational purposes. The second measure would ask the city council to take a million, roughly a million, $30,000, something like that, balance from free cash and appropriate that to the school budget for educational purposes. And so after having long conversations with our financial team and the superintendent, we're pretty certain that if these two measures totaling 2.5 million dollars, along with the net school spending amount, which I think, if I got the number right, it's a little bit under 8 million dollars from our side in the budget, and that, that also we're taking, that money we're taking into account the leases, plus adding the 600,000 from the transportation and the added debt service for the new school building projects and the new MSBA repair projects. If all these things pass the city council, my budget in the city will have met net school spending and also have given the schools the added 2.5 million dollars to get them to where they want to go. Now, that fixes the problem for FY 2018. And I think in FY 2019, whoever is mayor at the time, whoever the school committee is at the time, along with the superintendent, you know, unless the foundation formula at the state changes or charitable dollars increase, this budget will be creating a structural balance problem going forward. But even though our overseer, Sean Cronin, is not gonna veto this or get in the way of us using this financing this way, he's wary of us kicking the can down the road, as all of us are. But I think in a budget that is literally over 177 million dollars, you know, whether or not we can find the gap of a million dollars in, not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, I think we can get into a place where we can do that. But by 2020, let's be clear, if something hasn't changed, we are definitely gonna have to confront this in a real adult manner. And folks are gonna have to make serious choices between our educational program and financing it. And the state is also gonna have to figure out if they're gonna be a bigger partner, not just in Lawrence, but as we heard in Brockton and in the suburbs, where, you know, if you think we're feeling the hit for not meeting, that the formula doesn't really meet our, the amount of money we really need, they haven't even gotten to fully funding their formula in the suburbs, creating this real rift between the suburbs and the urban areas. And so I'm hoping that the state figures that piece out. And I think there is a ground swell to change the foundation formula. I share the superintendent's optimism that if not this next year, the following year, there will be some change at the state level that will impact us positively. But I think we have a good plan. The appropriation, the educational support appropriations will go down to the city council under my signature tomorrow for the next city council meeting. That'll go to the Budget and Finance Committee. After that, they'll vote on that from the subcommittee, send it back to the full council. And we should have roughly in four or six weeks, depending how long it stays in Budget Committee, we'll have an answer whether or not the 2.5 million that was extra that was added will have been passed by the city council. On top of that, the budget season starts in, on May 15. That goes through, probably through the end of June. And after that vote, we'll know whether or not net school spending in the budget, the added 600,000, net school spending has to pass, but the added 600,000 for the transportation will get passed. I think this gets us there. Like I said at the last meeting, I'm kind of a nerd around this thing, how can we fix these problems without causing too much impact to the, to the taxpayer. But these, because we're doing one-time monies, it doesn't have an impact on the taxpayer going forward. So I want to make sure that everybody knew that's where we're going. There's the answer to the question about whether or not we get the extra money. This board did its part in advocating for it. I did my part in putting it in the budget. And now we just gotta go before the city council and make the case for them, how important this money, the 2.5 is separate and apart, and then how important the money that's in the budget is. I too will take questions from the board if you have any, but if not, we can move on. Or from Mr. Superintendent or the finance team.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mrs. Mariano.
On behalf of the school committee, I want to thank you for making it work and coming up with that 2.5. Now, you need to let us know when we need to go to the budget hearing so that we can support your budget that you're passing for us or you're submitting for us.
Great. No, I will definitely do that. And it's, they're gonna put it on schedule. Every department gets some time before the city council budget committee and then some time in the full board. But the first big meeting is gonna be the Budget and Finance Committee a week from next Tuesday. Did I get that right? A week from next Tuesday, where they're gonna take up the 2.5, the two measures. It's one, to take the Lawrence High School litigation money and appropriate that to the schools, and then take 1.1, whatever it is, the difference, and appropriate that from free cash. Those two measures are gonna come up at the first Budget and Finance Committee meeting after this city council meeting, which is probably a week from next Tuesday.
May 23rd.
May 23rd. But we'll do an email, so people know.
Okay. Thank you, guys. I'd like to reiterate what Ms. Mariano said, which we think, you know, we appreciate the effort of both the mayor and the city council to try to help close this budget gap and to support the schools. Obviously, even with that donation, that, that money will still be making 1.8 million dollars in cuts. And we'll be coming back to you with what those cuts are, probably at the next meeting, or we'll get it to you at the end of June, depending on what happens with the state budget. Any final questions before we move to public participation, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to make a formal...
Dr. Rivera, sorry.
Thank you. I would like to make a formal request to add the issue of the Lawrence High School library to the next agenda.
That's noted. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
No, no, sir. So the mayor, I apologize, we couldn't get Mr. Fiatto here today. Obviously, with AP season and MCAS season and graduation scholarships, there's a lot going on over the next six weeks. But I did want to comment about the media story about the library. Regarding the media story, we don't consider it a fair or fully accurate reflection of the Learning Commons or LHS campus. So I could certainly sit here and take issue with the content. But it's really the story behind the story that's most disheartening. Frankly, I'd have to call it one of the bigger disappointments of my time in Lawrence. We know it was promoted in the media by a school committee member who was unhappy that the issue wasn't placed on a recent agenda, despite the fact that it was already discussed by her and Mr. Fiatto at this very school committee meeting in January. The high school team continues to work hard with the kids and has for the last few years on the redesign, including the evolution of the Learning Commons, which, by the way, it's always been called the Learning Commons, despite what that story said. And they deserve better than that. But instead of taking different avenues to work on behalf of the children, this person chose to push a divisive student versus student narrative in the press. Really, it's hard to see how that helps kids in any way, shape, or form. The reporter also failed to mention that this school committee member had lost her position here in the Lawrence Public Schools after being deemed not a fit at multiple schools inside Lawrence, or that she does not send her children to the Lawrence Public Schools. Nonetheless, she feels that she can get herself involved in this and go and push a story with a paper, not giving the full story to the reporter. And that's just truly unfortunate. It's, in many ways, it's shameful. I'm embarrassed that this has happened. I apologize to the parents at Abbott Lawrence Academy, some of whom may be here tonight. And it's just not what we're about as educators. You know, when we look back, we've got to decide who we're gonna be as a community. And this is the kind of thing that got us in receivership in the first place. Petty personal politics played a role in the school committee and got us into receivership. And I've worked hard to try to get us out of receivership, but this is the very kind of thing that people look and say, we're spending 95% of our money is coming from the state, and people are asking, because of these shenanigans, are we gonna allow this to happen? It's not acceptable, and it's so unfortunate. And with that, we will move to public comment. Do we, this is the list here? Mr. Malley, are you here?
Good evening, honorable members. In this meeting, the parent and citizen need to start appreciation of such a great Family Resource Center. Our proud parent and citizen and the student can come together, appreciate the turnaround plan, appreciate the best public school that Honorable Superintendent Bradley brought to our city. We, the citizen, are grateful for progress of turnaround plan, the best leadership of Honorable Superintendent Bradley, the hero that rescued our public school. Our public school now the best example of the success in the nation. We, the parent and citizen, are proud to report that our public school now has more higher school graduate, more MCAS improvement, more level one school, and the proud city of immigrant has risen up again. One of the best education for the new generation has helped our children thank the new Lawrence High School design ready for the 21st century education. The special education task force from the first day of arrival of Honorable Superintendent Bradley have been positive changes and improvement. But we cannot forget the past. But our task as a citizen and a parent is not over. We need to support our hard-working teachers and their union. We assure the wonderful Lawrence Teachers Union that 83,000 citizens are united in support of our teachers. Their union, every day, need to remind ourselves that how our public school was in the past. Our children now have hope energized to participate in the best public school in Massachusetts. Before, only the news was how bad is our public school. Now, the accomplishment of our public school, we are grateful to our teachers and union. Demand of you in this important election year, support our hard-working teachers and their union. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Laura Caban, are you here?
Hello.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Francine Valcourt?
I just basically want to say, my name is Francine Valcourt. I want to say two things. I want to thank the mayor for stepping up to the plate and meeting the gap that's required, and I hope that the city council does the same. And I also want to thank the superintendent for having the right attitude. We had, my daughter is a freshman at Abbott Academy, and we really want to have a sense of unity at the high school and not of divisiveness. And I want to thank the superintendent for reinforcing that.
Thank you. Joan, any other speakers tonight? Mr. Mayor, will you take us out?
I understand a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The aics have it.